Okay, good evening. Like to welcome you to the August San Marino Planning Commission meeting. We're going to dispense with the flag salute since we're we're on the Zoom and everyone's in their own wherever. We'd like to acknowledge and have a roll call of the members present if you'd be kind enough, Camilia, to just take a roll call, please.
Certainly. Here, Brody.
Present.
Vice Chair Chang. Seems to be absent at the moment. Moving on to Commissioner Dustin.
Here.
And Commissioner Wright will be absent today. Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
And alternate Commissioner Chow.
Here.
Okay, very well, we have a quorum, so let's begin. We'd like to, first of all, note that the posting of this hearing has been accomplished by the San Marino website as well as at the San Marino Recreation Department, the San Marino Public Library, and the San Marino City Hall. Before getting into the Planning Commission procedures, I'd like to first ask anyone in the audience if they'd like to make a general comment, not about anything that's on the calendar today, but involves the Planning Commission in some way, shape, or form. Does anyone have any general comment that they'd like to make? Okay, I don't believe we have anyone raising their hand on this. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to the explanation of the Planning Commission procedures. Very straightforward. We have a very short calendar this evening. Let me go through as quickly as I can the procedures. We received the plans from city staff as well as city staff's comment on those plans and have visited the site, reviewed the application thoroughly, and hence, we're coming in here with a basic understanding of what the application state. As we move forward, we will ask staff for a summary of the application. We will then inquire of staff if necessary, and then ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to come forward and comment if they so choose. The hearing will then be open to the public, and I will ask for comments for, against, or about the project. I request that you keep your comments three minutes and under, and please do not repeat prior comments. You certainly could say, I agree with the prior person who said, but without going through the entire monologue of what was said. Please give us your name and address, if you'd be kind, and at the conclusion of all of these public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and then I will essentially go through the each member of the commission and ask them their thoughts on the matter, and thereafter, take a vote. If the if the matter is approved, anyone who is objecting to it still has a 15-day appeal period. If it's if it's denied, the same 15-day appeal period applies. Once a matter is approved, it becomes a legal document, the application, that is, and the person who obtained that approval cannot use it as a jumping off point to modify the application, and if they do, they can suffer a fine equal to the greater, equal to or greater than the 5% of the project valuation or $2,500, in addition to resubmitting the design changes to the commission for a de novo review. We're not going to start any new items after 11. It's believed that we will be able to complete this in an orderly and relatively expeditious matter. The first item on the agenda, if we can have a staff report on that.
Certainly. So for item number one, this is for Design Review 21-63 for 2174 Melville Drive. The project involves the construction of a 636 square foot one-story addition with a 514 square foot second-story addition to an existing two-story single-family residence. The project also includes the demolition of an existing 427 square foot garage and the construction of a new 536 square foot detached two-car garage. Other changes to the home that are part of this project include a change to the balcony opening size on the front facade, replacement and relocation of windows and doors, the alteration of pavement to the existing driveway, the installation of a new perimeter fencing on both sides of the property lines, installation of a new wrought iron gate to the side yard, new landscaping exterior finishes, and the removal of two heritage trees. For some project history, this proposal went before the Design Review Committee three times, where at the third meeting it was denied, and then the applicant appealed it within the 15-day appeal period to the Planning Commission, which is why it is before you today.
Thank you. Does anyone have any inquiry of staff on this application? Camilia, is there someone responding on the commission to that request?
There isn't anything, and the last item I would just like to add, not on the agenda, but supplemental documents that were emailed to the commissioners and also added to the city's website was the comment we received from one neighbor with the photos, and the second item was that letter from the homeowner, which was submitted for review, and I don't, yeah.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, is the applicant or applicant's representative present? Would like to make a comment?
That's a good evening, and thank you all for hearing my appeal. Clearly, I'm here because I do feel like this this project is worthy of approval. I have a presentation that I believe Camilia is going to drive here, and I'm ready anytime you are, Camilia. Okay. Neighbor supporter objection letters received.
Rob, you're freezing.
Letters, one. Is that okay? Is it better?
Yeah, and if you might want to turn off your camera, so there's a clear audio that that might work for you momentarily.
Drop my camera? Okay.
There you go. Yeah.
All right. Sorry about that. So of the legal neighborhood, we did receive eight non-objection forums. I believe five either no comment or not home forums, a one-written objection forum. Next slide, please.
Before you go ahead on this, Mr. Tyler, if you'd just state your name, address, and occupation, I believe you're the architect on this.
I am. My name is Robert Tyler, and I'm with Tyler Kelly Architecture at South Lake Avenue, Suite 500 Pasadena, California.
Thank you. Sorry for interrupting. Go ahead.
No problem, no problem. So in the interest of saving everybody time, I'm going to focus on the known objections, which are the neighbors to the immediate west and east as well as to the south, illustrated by the arrows you see on the screen right there. Next, please. Just for your for your general reference, this is aerial view off Google Earth. You can see the pin in our project there, and you can see the configuration of the property just to the east. I believe Brian Tang and his wife are listening as we as we go on here. And then, next, next slide, please. So that's 2162, that's the neighbor to the west. That's behind the oak tree there. It's a lovely oak tree. The tangs here, 2186, and then down at 2177, a dare. Each of these sites have have different issues, which I will go into briefly here. Next. So our property is, once again, with a pin there. Like you just kind of keep your eye on that building corner. That building corner will serve as good reference in the drawings that I'm going to show you. And next slide, please. These are the adjacent corners of the buildings, both to the east and west. The buildings, the the house to the to the west actually has a couple of accessory structures. One, you can see there, another that's underneath the tree. You can also see the position of our garage there. Next. The property to the south has detached accessory garage, and their coral, I believe with us, is the screening between properties and the proposed removal of a jackaranda tree. And it has been questioned in the past, the the nature and accuracy of our survey. I have clarified this issue with city staff, and for your reference, you can see a portion of our survey, which is also included in your package. The red dot there indicates the utility pole in question, and the dot-dash line that you see there is the existing concrete block masonry wall that also exists on the neighbor's property. Next, please. Once again, I mentioned to you a few minutes ago to keep your eye on on the corner of our building, the big white L-shaped upside-down L-shaped rectangle is the existing building footprint. The gray you can see there, I know you're all familiar with this, is the proposed addition. The proposed addition approximately aligns with the corner of the building to the east and is somewhat longer than the building to the west, but you can also see their accessory structures close to the common property line of the westerly property, which is down on your drawing. Next, please. Okay, so to to the question of of the individual corals with our application, the the there's two different components to the westerly neighbor. I believe that the gentleman that we've spoken to in the hearings has been focused on the replacement of existing wire fencing along that property line under the oak tree that benefits both of our properties, and he's been interested in how we build the new wood fence and that it would be finished on both sides. That 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 concern, I believe, we have accommodated in the application, the original application, and we I do understand how to use the existing fence posts to to construct a new fence without disturbing the root system. There's also by his wife, a concern about privacy, and I'd like to point out here that we we are almost, well, over over 28 feet setback from the westerly property line, and that there is approximately 38 feet between our our buildings, and then also that there is a large oak tree that provides a pretty substantial screening between our properties that I think mitigates this fairly sufficiently. Next. This is the summary of my understanding of the the concerns of the tanks to our east. We had previously, previous to the last DRC meeting, consulted with them about what kind of fence that they would want. That was following some commissioner comments about making that fence friendly, and so I believe that they they had a change of heart between our conversation, the hearing, but in in our world, we were happy to put in whatever fence he wants. My understanding is that he'd like an open steel fence, and and we're able to to do that, and the the plans that I've been working on, not ones you've submitted, you're looking at, because those are the same ones from DRC, are now showing the painted steel fence. They're also have a privacy concern. And so I'd like to point out once again that our our building is over 20 feet setback from our property line. It's it's lower than than is allowed. It's lower than the existing building that we're adding, proposing down onto. And we've got about 33 feet between our our buildings based on these setbacks. Next slide, please. What I described to you, the tangs a couple days ago, and we got notice of this hearing availability, I'm fairly sure to know this, so I reached out to Brian to just to confirm that the steel fence was what he wanted. I provided a picture of that to him, and we talked about landscape screening.
If you look at your landscape plan, you'll see that there's kind of a gap where to to the right of the big arrow between there and our existing garage. I've spoken to our landscape architect, and we both have come to the conclusion that it's in our common interest to continue the potocarpus hedge, which I'm sure you know what type of plant that is. It is a fairly effective, tall and fast-growing screening plant that would effectively provide a good deal of separation between our properties, plus the 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 greenery from his driveway side. I have an illustration next of what that might look like. So the the hedge you see there is approximately 12 feet high. I have these same plants in my own yard. They're about that high, and I I think this is a pretty effective solution for for privacy. Next, please. I'll try and hurry it along. Here here's the the fence is viewed from above the property to the east, kind of looking into our yard. Next, please. So then to the property to the south, as I mentioned, there's a utility pole, jackaranda, the existing garage, and I've looked at this a few times, and I understand everybody's need for for privacy, everybody's need and desire for privacy in their yards. I'd like to point out that there is a relatively limited view of our property due to the obstruction of the their detached garage and other landscaping that occurs on their property. Furthermore, we're proposing to complete that potocarpus hedge along our south property line to 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 provide additional screening. They're also concerned with the removal, proposed removal of a jackaranda tree. Tree number six in the tree survey, the arborist report that you have, and so if you go to the next slide, please. This is the tree in question. It is been shown by this arborist that this tree has structural problems. We don't want that tree to fall down on us. We don't want it to fall down on somebody else. We are planting several new trees and have replacement trees in our landscape plan as submitted. So I I think that removing this tree, which I believe could be done at a ministerial level, along with adequate tree replacement, is a reasonable request, especially given the recommendation from the arborist and the noted structural problems, not the least of which is it is his opinion that it has a high probability to fail in the near future. Next, please. This is the potocarpus hedge that is part of your plans that that we're proposing. It's the same hedge that I was describing for the for the east property line. Next, please. And then, lastly, I'd like to 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 just bring your attention to what I believe is a consistency in 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 findings issue. This is not our site. This is a project that is under construction at 1260 Mesa Road. It is one of our projects. The length of that building is approximately the same length as what we're proposing here. It is all two stories. Next slide, please. This is a rendering of it, so you kind of get a sense of it. It's, you know, it's not the same architecture. The building that we're proposing adding on to here would be about five feet lower than that. Next, next slide, please. And the setback on this building is 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 identical to what we're proposing. In fact, this is a one foot less than what we're proposing at 2174. That's a 20-foot side yard setback that you see to the corner right now. So just as a sense of like how how much proximity we're proposing and how much light and air separation we're providing between the the neighbors and our our project is identical to what you see in the gap there between the green hedge and the edge of the building. Next one. Okay, this is another project also in San Marino. It's a 1360 Lorraine Road, completed a couple years ago. It is also a two-story project. You'll note the south property line is at at a eight or nine-foot setback line. The there's a driveway to 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 the north as well, kind of kind of similar in some ways to to the setup, but most interestingly, that this project was was approved with a far less setback and a roof that is, in fact, five feet taller than what we're proposing at at the Melville site. Next, please. Next, next slide. And here's a here's a picture of it built, and you can't really see behind the tree there, but you know, it's it's once again, it's a different type of architecture, but it it does have two-story massing, relatively close proximity to the property lines on a lot that is approximately the same dimensions, and my last slide, please. One more, Camilia. Thanks. So then just kind of recapping the metrics, and I think I've used my five minutes up. Our floor area max 30, 3,600. I realize that's not consistently an issue. We're under that by about 10, 10 or more percent. Lock coverage, we're over 1,000 feet under. Our setbacks front is 30-foot minimum, a 40-foot existing rear is 30-foot minimum and almost 60-foot proposed. The right side is eight-foot minimum, nine-foot eight existing, 28-foot 11 proposed, and on the left, eight-foot minimum, 17.6 existing. That does not consider the portico share, and 20-foot 3 inches proposed at the addition. Height is 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 much lower than is allowed by code and lower than the previously approved projects that I showed you. I mentioned the objection letters. Your your package includes a report by our historical consultants that not only provided the context for the building, but it's not a designated building. However, our design approach was to work with the parameters of the secretary standards for that, which we have done, which is is supported in that report. Staff has found and recommended approval for the necessary findings to all three design committee meetings. I believe I've shown that the neighbor's concerns can be adequately mitigated with some landscaping, and then the comparative projects, as I mentioned. I think the city should strive to be consistent in their rulings, and I don't believe that there are any other unusual circumstances than the lovely big oak tree that was giving shape to our yard that would would come to weigh on this that didn't weigh similarly on the other projects.
Thank you very much. Is any of the commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
I do.
Okay, please, Commissioner.
Thank you. My first question is, there's a really interesting detail in the stucco that is to the left of the front door. I just want to is it going to stay?
Yes, that's that's actually a screen on a window to a powder room.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to it was a very lovely detail, so I wanted to be there. Another thing, and this may be a question for the applicant as opposed to you, Mr. Tyler. In the letter we received from Lisa, I'm sorry, Lisa Pan. And I just want to get clarity, because there was something that was written in here that I just want to know. It are is the plan for the applicant to live in the house or for her family to live in the house, because there's a comment here that says, we've decided not to fight for it anymore. We want to walk away and move on.
Well, she's she's very weary of what she believes is ugly public process. She doesn't feel like she's been treated very well by one or more of the neighbors, and that was described in the letter, I believe, and you'll have to forgive her 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 language writing skills. English isn't first to her, but she 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 just frankly, I paid for for the appeal. I paid for the appeal because I feel like it's the right thing to do. I I feel like denial of this project is is really putting a incredibly subjective burden on 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 members of the community. The Pans have lived here for 10 years. They they know San Marino. So I believe that the the answer is it depends on what the outcome is. So the house is not habitable right now. The house needs, you know, a million dollars worth of work just to get it back to okay, not not including an addition. But that kind of investment doesn't really make sense if what you end up with is the same two-bedroom house at the end of the day. So there there are several concerns here. And if it were the house that she'd imagined, the one that we drew for her, I believe that her intention is to have her family move in. But I I don't know what's going to happen here tonight, so that's the best answer I could give.
Okay, thank you for the clarity and the transparency.
Any other commissioners have any questions of the applicants?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
So are you planning to replaster the entire house or just match the plaster of the addition to the existing?
Match the plaster, the addition to the existing, although you'll note on the front elevation that the and I know you were all out there, the arches on the second floor are strangely low, so we're actually proposing to raise those up to regular door height, give them a little bit better proportion, so there will be some replaster work that would go on around the the window replacement and around the the increased arch height.
And then I just, I want to get some clarity on the height of the home. I see a lot of different measurements. Your plan information sheet indicates the roof height at 24 feet, but none of your elevations are anywhere close to that, so I'm assuming that is an error.
You're correct. The I'm a I have to admit, I don't go back to the plan information sheet as often as I should, but the dimensions shown on the plans are the correct dimension, so I think the discrepancy occurred when in in the measurement of the overall height. It was pointed out by staff that our great plane wasn't at the right location, so we moved the great plane to the right location, and that yields the numbers that you see on the drawings.
And then on on sheet A40, on the north elevation, you have two heights listed there. One is labeled existing at 21.6, and then there's a second height notated at 21.8. What's going on there? What's accounting for that two inches increase in the height of the building?
Let me zoom into it here. Forgive me.
Sure.
So the addition is a 21.0. The existing is a 21. Six, you can see that the the tick mark for the 21.6 dimension on A40, the top elevation is is missing that upper ridge by a little bit. I think perhaps that might be it. The thing to know, I think from your point of view, though, is that our our proposed roof is lower than the existing roof.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Any other questions of the applicant's architect?
Right, do you, Charlie Brody? I just had a question related to the jackaranda tree proposed to be removed. If that tree were not to be approved for removal, can your garage be constructed as drawn on your current plans?
Well, it it could. I mean, I could reduce the size a little bit. I I have a hard time with two things. One is one is that the the arborist is telling me that tree's going to fall over, and if it falls over, it's going to fall right on our new garage. And then the other, the other thing is I I don't and to please don't take this the wrong way, but I'm not sure I am required to go through a commission level approval to remove that tree. Staff could correct me if I'm wrong. I was told that that's ministerial.
And it would go through our tree removal process, which is reviewed by Urban Forester.
It would be our strong It would be our strong desire to remove that tree.
Understood. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I I have one other question just because I'm if no, since I already had a turn, I don't mean to step over anybody.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just for point of clarification, the the power pole and sorry, I have to put my plans on the floor, but the power pole and the cinder block wall. Um, am I to understand that the power pole belongs to the people behind this house? But those people installed the cinder block wall such that they made it appear as though the power pole belongs to your this property?
I don't know what the history of that wall is, but the the utility pole resides on their property. It's it's not their utility pole. It serves many, many houses. So what I what I what I think happened based on the configuration of the wall and the plan is that 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 property owner, whether it was the current ones or not, constructed the wall at some point in time and then not having the rights to build onto our site zigged around the wall on their side.
Okay.
That I'm just guessing, though, and they may be here tonight to explain.
But but you think that that's where the confusion? That's where some of the confusion came in terms of where the utility pole actually resided on whose property line was potentially that.
Yes, and I real.
I'm sorry, you froze.
At the the package submitted that you have before you. And sometimes those documents are a little hard to read. If you check the survey drawing provided, you'll see that there are arrows that point at the property corners. And so you can pick out the line where the property line is. And it in my surveyors information and that's the best information I have is that all the features occur on that, the the property twenty-one seventy-seven there.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm I'm done now, Chair.
Thank you. And any other inquiry of the applicant's architect? Okay, not hearing anything at this point, we'll now open the hearing to public comment. Anyone who wishes to make a comment in favor of opposed or about the project, please raise your hand and make yourself known. Give us your name and address and and we'd appreciate your commentary. Are we seeing anything, Camelia?
Uh, Mr. Dimkitch, would you like to speak first?
Yes, I would. My name is Mitch Dimkitch. I've lived at twenty-one seventy-five Melville Drive in San Marino for thirty-eight years as resident. I've listened to Mr. Tyler's plans on May and I know there were some issues, but he made one minor change, reducing the total square footage of eleven ninety-six to eleven fifty. A reduction of forty-six square feet. Mr. Tyler is a gentleman of his word. He said he refuses to change his submitted plan. And I think his strategy tonight was to take you on the tour of San Marino of some of the other areas he's worked in. But once again, that doesn't apply totally to the home we're talking about at twenty-one seventy-four. Mr. Tyler stated he does not know who will live in the home at twenty-one seventy-four. And I will say, on behalf of this street, we have had more than our share of flips and vacant homes on Melville Drive. To my knowledge, Mr. Tyler has not met with any of the neighbors, nor have we seen or heard from the owners. Mr. Tyler has stated that the home is in deplorable condition. Yet the home was rented during May and June to the former owners of the home at twenty-one eighty-six, the east side, prior to their final move. You know, I have I have a little issue on the degree of unethical practice. This home was sold by the Petruska family who had lived there fifty-plus years. And when the professor Petruska passed away, his son inherited the home. He sold the home for one million nine hundred and twenty thousand. In October of twenty twenty-one, the home sold for eight hundred and twenty thousand. You know, my concern is, obviously, we all know that there's some tax advantages that people want to take. But I just have a concern that if you had people applying for or going through an appraisal on Melville Drive somewhere, that that could have, that could impact the appraisal on the home in the immediate area. In my thirty-eight years living at Melville, we've had other neighbors who've had additions and done major things to their homes. And we've in the past had the opportunity to meet with the owners, the architect, the neighbors. And we've always been able to come to an amiable agreement that basically has made everyone happy. But it's obvious Mr. Tyler is not a team player. He could care less about the neighbor's concern or issues on Melville Drive. There's two issues of concern that are that have been massiveness and privacy of the proposed two-story. At the last design review meeting, Mr. Raymond Chen, design review member, stated in his closing remarks, the following. One, do not go out as far with the existing two-story addition. Or two, possibly do a single-story addition. I would strongly recommend support of a single-story addition, which would address the two issues of massiveness and privacy. I know there are other issues that will be addressed tonight by the neighbors on the east and the west sides of the property. During my thirty-eight years in San Marino, it's a beautiful community. It's known for its beautiful green trees. And is quickly becoming known for its beautiful green trees and vacant homes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public wishes to speak for about this particular project? Please make yourself known. And and state your name and address, please. I think you you need, you're muted. You need to unmute.
What about Penny Cole first and then Brian and Angela Tang?
You're muted, ma'am.
Hello, this is Penny Cole. Thank you. My husband and I live in twenty-one sixty-two Melville. We are the immediate west house to this proposed project. I would like to tell you that in the twenty years I've lived in this block, I have seen more and more vacant homes. When Dr. Petruska family sold the house. That was about three years ago. A young man came knock on the door. He said he is the owner's agent and he had plans for for us to sign off. And every time there is any communication, it's always this young man. And finally, he said, he is only the contractor. He is not the owner. And for the last of ever since the first time he showed us the blueprint, I told him that on this block, just like what Mitch just said, Mr. Mitch just said. If the architect and the homeowners work with the neighbors, we usually are very perceptive. We usually are very acceptable to plans. For example, twenty-one thirty-eight, the architect had an open house showing the plan to the neighbors on this block. And very minor things, very frivolous things, he would patiently explain to us. And when I told this to the contractor for him to relate to the owner, it never happened. As a matter of fact, we never knew the owner's identity. We only know Lisa Pan, who claims to be the real estate agent. We didn't know that she is the concealed owner until three years later. And when she said she's had enough with this project, she wants to walk away. She's not going to have his her family move over. No, she has a home in San Marino. She didn't plan to have her immediate family move over. She wanted to buy this house for a relative who is in Taiwan and who knows when they will move over here. Now, I would like you to look at slide slide thirteen. And if you look at slide thirteen, this is may I have slide thirteen on the screen, please?
Um, I'm sorry. Slide thirteen from which document?
The one you just shown. I'm using Mr. Tyler's slide.
Okay.
Thank you. I understand this is only an artistic rendition. It's not accurate. But even if you look at this artistic rendition, you can see how massive it is in the back. It's two-story, the south property, the south end of the building protrudes far beyond the east and the west profit structures. And it's a two-story building. It's very imposing. Thank you. This is all I want to say.
Thank you very much. Any anyone else wishes to speak for against or about this particular application? Please make yourself known. Okay, Brian and Angela, could you give us your name and address and then hopefully concisely tell us your your concern or your support or opposition?
Hi, this is Angie and Brian Tang. We are the neighbors directly to the east of the proposed project and we are two-one-eight-six Melville Drive. We've lived here about three and a half months, so we are a bit newer, but we've attended the last couple of design review committee meetings where this proposal was denied on the basis of incompatibility with the neighborhood. And I, you know, I'm not going to repeat their their arguments, but I do appreciate Mr. Dimkitch and the Penny Fitzgerald speaking up on the history of the street and giving us some context for this project. Our main concerns, Camelia, if you wouldn't mind throwing up some photos that I emailed the other day. I just sent a few just to give the committee some a visual aid of what our view is from from our side of the property line regarding the proposed addition. So yeah, I think it would be helpful to. Yeah, yeah, you can just scroll through them or just, yeah, just give everyone a a chance to give them a glance at. So yeah, the what you see there is the where our garbage bins are housed and it is the the wall of their existing garage, which will be removed. If you scroll down a bit more. Yeah, you can see the our garage in the back, a small existing fence and then some trees. So you can see that there isn't quite a lot of room between our our garage and their existing garage. And it's we had, we did have some questions regarding the exact placement of the property line because it's a bit tight back there and we are using it for our purposes and our, you know, it's a driveway. So we definitely want to make sure that it's properly surveyed when the fence goes down. Yeah, regarding, so you can see the flags there. And so that that's going to show how tall the addition will be when it's completed. We have a pool in our backyard and when we look over to the west, we can see as Penny mentioned, it is quite imposing. It protrudes quite a bit. That's the view from our pool. It's going to come out because it is a two-story addition. It is going to block our existing sightlines, which are, you know, they are, they're not, you know, we don't have an incredible view as it exists currently, but we do have. I mean, there was a clearing. We do see some mature trees and we don't see the side of somebody's house or you know. We are already kind of closed in on the east side by some tall shrubs. And so if the proposal goes through as as planned, we will be pretty much boxed in. And so that's not, you know, ideally, we would like to maintain what what view we do have. Rob Tyler did, you know, to his credit, he did reach out regarding the fence and proposed the the potocarpus screening hedge, which we appreciate. It's better than nothing. It does address our privacy concerns as far as, you know, it's, you know, as opposed to not having a screening hedge at all. Certainly, that's preferable, but when you consider how far this would protrude and how tall it is, you can see in the picture. We would, we would definitely you know, it would definitely impact us you know, greatly, as you can see here. So yeah, did you have any? Any other comments?
Yeah, I think just to add to that, I think, you know, the hedge, I think that's appreciated, but we're kind of you know, having to choose between almost, you know, being boxed in with this two-story addition or being boxed in by the hedge. And so that kind of just puts us in a tough spot there. And then the trash bin space that, you know, was in one of the earlier photos, you know, I think you know, that that is that area by the garages where we're currently putting our trash bins. If we don't have that space, it's going to be difficult for us to find a space for our trash bins. That's going to be not in the way of our driveway and also accessible by the trash services. So that's something we don't really have an answer to.
Yeah, you can you can see if you scroll up back to the photo, we are using pretty much every inch of space on that side. We need clearance for the the cars to pass through as well as our pool gate to open and close. And we have seven bins and yeah, it's, yeah, our buildings are very close to each other. I understand Rob mentioned setbacks, but we really have trouble visualizing how it's going to look in the final, you know, once everything's placed, because, you know, they're removing some trees, they're putting something here, something there, taking this away. And it's a large-scale project. It's definitely going to have an impact on our, you know, on our enjoyment and the utility of the property as we as it currently exists. And so, yeah, us being newer, we haven't lived here very long, of course, but we've been very involved with the design review and familiar with this project. And so for what it's worth, you know, privacy concerns, yes, they are addressed to some degree and it is appreciated, but I think based on the scope and the scale of the overall addition, I'm not sure it's going to be enough to I guess, get our wholehearted the green, the green light from us because as Dimkitch mentioned, maybe a one-story or a shorter one would be, we would definitely be you know, open to any other proposals, but I went over time, so that's all from us.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishes to speak for against or about the proposal? We we seeing anything? All quiet on the western front as the movie title stated. All right, so let's close the public aspect of the hearing.
I'm sorry, Chair Brody, do I have the opportunity to ask either Mr. Tyler or the Tangs a question?
Sure, if you'd like to, if it
I will. I just really want to get clarity. Do we know the area where the tangs keep their trash cans? Whose property is that?
I can answer if you want.
Okay.
The it appears to me, based on the picture and the painting, that the the property line is partway between the edge of their driveway and the existing garage of our site.
So that where the trash cans are, is their property?
Part partly, if you refer to our survey topographic map, you'll see the outline includes a small slipper of land looks to be to be probably a foot and a half between the property line and the existing garage.
Right, I got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Close the public aspect of the hearing and let's hear from the commissioners. Since you were the last to speak, Commissioner Shelley, oh, she made a face.
No, I just knew that I knew that that was what was going to happen and I was gathering my thoughts, but I'm okay if you are patient with me.
Chair Brody, I'm sorry, and Commissioner Boy, I just want to interject very briefly before the discussion starts. And I just want to point out that the identity of the owner and whether the owners are going to reside in the house is not a proper or relevant factor, uh, for the project that's before you tonight. I just wanted to make that.
I think, I think most of us, uh, understand that, but, uh, also understand the frustration of, of the folks who spoke. All right, uh, Commissioner Shelley, if you would please.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, gosh, it's been a long time since I've been the first one to talk on a project. Um, so as I always like to state ahead of time, uh, I am always very sensitive to the, the rights of the homeowner and the responsibility to the community. I feel the frustration that the, um, neighbors have communicated with regards to the number of vacant homes as I live in an area where we have quite a few vacant homes as well. And it's a safety concern, it's, uh, it's an aesthetic concern, et cetera. But, um, that isn't before us. Uh, I, what do I want to say about this project? First of all, I really appreciate that the architect has, is trying to restore this house to a original, what, what it might have looked like originally. Um, and the details that they are planning on keeping, that matters a lot to me. Um, I, so I really appreciate, um, keeping the uniqueness of the house. Um, there have been discussions about privacy. There have been discussion about landscape. Um, and this is kind of where it becomes a funny thing, because while the one neighbors showed what their future view would be, the house is within its legal rights as drawn by Mr. Tyler. And it therefore shouldn't be punitive to the homeowner to not be able to do what they want to do. If there is this issue of just altering the view of what the neighbors would see. They've been very blessed by not having, you know, a house there. But, you know, the, the home is designed within legalities per our code for the homeowner to do this design, which is where I get very, um, this is where I get a little hung up, only because the homeowner does have the right, but I also think that there's the responsibility to the community. I think that the homeowners in this case have gone above and beyond to try to accommodate a lot of the neighbors' concerns. Um, to be honest with you, I have more of a concern that there's going to be one fence bordering two, one, six, two, Melville and a completely different style of fence bordering two, one, eight, six. If I understood correctly, there's going to be wood on one side and steel on the other. And that actually gives me more pop, more cause for concern. And it's like, there's now this realm of being so over accommodating that there's inconsistency within this one house and, you know, what they're trying to do to, um, make everyone happy. Um, so. I think, uh, I think that I can support this project. I think that it is relatively modest and, um, and I think that they have done a good job at retaining the architectural style of the original building. Um, one note, and maybe this is to you, Mr. Tyler, um, with regards to the landscape plans, if you can communicate this, um, just so you know, you happen to have the one planning commissioner, reviewing this, that is an avid home gardener. The raised beds, uh, will never work where they are. It's not that they will, won't work. First of all, a, a raised bed that is eight foot by 10 foot, that is too big. The, the homeowners will never be able to properly harvest all of the food. You want to break that down into four raised beds. Um, just split them up and have walkways between them. I also would suggest instead of them being on the southwest side, you make them completely south and extend the, um, St. Augustine and do something different in that way, if you understand what I'm saying. Like right now, they're facing this way and you need them to go this way. And I'm sorry, but, and the other thing I will say is that there's no, um, limitations to put raised beds in the front yard if that's the more, um, sunny feasible area, uh, because that is what I have done. And so I'm just wanting to say that because you did just have, I love the raised beds. I go for it. I think it's an amazing addition. You just, the, the way that they're designed right now, it won't, it won't please the homeowners. Um, and that is all I have to say.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Chang?
Hello?
Commissioner Chang still on?
Are you, are you referring to, uh, me as the alternative?
Yes, you're, you're a regular guy now. You're a regular voting commissioner.
All right, hey, thank you, Chair Brody. Um, and so I, my comments are these. With regard to the, uh, city attorney's comments about the fact that the owner not being present and/or her intentions for the property not being a relevant issue, um, I, I recognize that. Um, and but my, and my decision will not be based on that factor, although I do have to express that it would have been nice to have heard from the applicant related to her intentions of the project generally, um, although again, that is not a factor. My main issue with regard to the project is the massing and scale of the project as proposed. Um, you know, driving by the property and from the streetscape, you can see the flags, um, that are quite, quite, quite large and it makes the massing in the building look like it does not fit within the neighborhood. Um, and so, and, and it looks like from a design perspective, it was a rectangular box that was just installed and attached as a secondary afterthought to the proposed project. Um, so that is my primary concern. Uh, further with regard to design, um, and this is just, uh, my opinion, is that I do appreciate the archways, um, and, and the arches and windows and doors of the Spanish colonial revival properties. And, uh, my opinion is that, um, should this be before us again? Subsequently, I would like to see more archway style windows and doors with regard to the addition. Again, naturally, if, if this doesn't pass tonight. Um, with regard to the aesthetics further, I don't believe that a wooden fence would be consistent with the design of the current project. I understand that there were discussions with, uh, related to a wrought iron, uh, design along the adjoining property, uh, with the adjoining properties to the west and the east. Uh, but I too, I don't believe that that is consistent. Um, I do appreciate more of the Santa Barbara style stucco that exists at the property and maybe some type of Santa Barbara style, um, fencing along the perimeter of the property where there would be fencing would, would be more of an ideal design aesthetic. Um, and, and then subsequently, uh, reinforced with potocarpus hedges. I also am not a huge fan of the proposed driveway of the concrete slabs, uh, interlaced with turf. Uh, you know, from driving up and down the street, I did not actually see that type of design within the legal block and with, from which the property was situated. Um, and then finally, with the regard to the jacaranda tree, uh, and it's, and it's, uh, proposal to be removed, uh, my general opinion is that, yeah, I'm not really pleased with the aesthetic of the leaning tree. Uh, but I wasn't necessarily convinced that, uh, you know, from the Arbus report, that it was going to fail. That seemed like it was a speculative comment and indicating that it may fail. Um, and the, uh, architect did indicate that the project could proceed without the removal of the jacaranda tree. Um, and so for all the bases these that I've enumerated, I would move to, or I would deny, um, the approval of this project.
Thank you very much. Commissioner John?
All right, um. Let me start by saying, uh, I really like the design of this proposal. I like the, um, adjustments to the archway height on the front facade. I think that the architect has done a really good job of, um, updating and modernizing the, the layout of this home to address modern needs, but also being respectful of the historic provenance of this home. That being said, um, I do have some concerns about this project here in this location. So, you know, again, there's been a lot of, um, comments about, you know, who owns this? What are they going to do with this property? Uh, these are not issues that are of any importance. And I don't like to get distracted by things. So when I get, feel like I'm being distracted, uh, I always go back to the design guidelines, the residential design guidelines. And, uh, I will, um, take a little bit of difference here with, uh, my fellow Commissioner Boyle. It's not enough to simply satisfy code. That is why we have a design review process. Mr. Tyler, you know, showed us many wonderful projects of his around town. I'm familiar with, uh, quite a few of those, uh, and even reviewed quite a few of those. They're not in this neighborhood. They are irrelevant. You cannot compare those properties to this property. Everything is to be reviewed and assessed within the context of the neighborhood. So I looked at this neighborhood very carefully several times. Spent a lot of time walking around. There's a very strong neighborhood characteristic in this neighborhood. And that is, yes, you have single-story homes, you have two-story homes. All the two-story homes in this neighborhood have a very characteristic limitation on how far the second level of that structure extends into the rear of the property. They are all within a couple feet of their neighboring second-story homes or if the home beyond it is a, is a single-story home. It, the house drops down to a single, uh, to a single-story configuration and then extends into the backyard. The residential design guidelines are very clear. Uh, and just so I don't get it wrong, I'm gonna read them. The stronger the established pattern, the more important it is to maintain the character of the neighborhood by respecting those patterns. And this proposal does not do that. The second story addition, I, I, I will even accept an expansion of the existing second story, but not to the extent that is being proposed here. It is, it is a massive block. And, um, so for that reason, I still do not feel that this proposal is, uh, compatible with the existing neighborhood and it defies this strongly established pattern that does exist in this neighborhood. Uh, furthermore, I still, you know, I appreciate that there obviously was some, uh, reaching out to the neighbors to try and talk about privacy issues. Unfortunately, they're all landscape oriented and landscaping is, is a cure for privacy issues? It is not a reliable cure. Landscaping can fail. Subsequent owners can fail to maintain it. Subsequent owners can choose to chop it down, trim it, send it out. There is no control over landscaping once this project leaves this body. Um, so. I have, uh, significant concerns such that I cannot, um, support the project as it is proposed here in this configuration. Uh, but since I'm not really clear where this is going to go, I'm going to give some additional comments on just, uh, detail, design detail, uh, that I find, uh, problematic in case, uh, my fellow commissioners are inclined to move ahead with this. The, uh, the plans are not consistent when it refers to fences and gates. Uh, the plans use the term steel and the plans use the term wrought iron. Uh, that needs to be stipulated and as far as I'm concerned, wrought iron is an acceptable material. Tubular steel is not. The proposed exterior light fixtures are not appropriate for this project. Uh, you have basically unshielded fixtures down the east, uh, elevation of this project, four of them at, at, uh, I think it's, um, uh, I think it's over eight hundred lumens each. That the glare to the neighbors to the east or to the west is going to be, um, unlivable. Uh, that needs to be rethought. And then. Uh, let's see. I, I, I have to say, I'm a little bit nervous. I know we don't really have a say about the tree removal process. Um, but we do have a say about the landscape plan. And I am not really comfortable with the landscape plan as it is. You're taking out very large, beautiful, established heritage trees and you are replacing them with, um, things that can be controlled through pruning after they're planted to basically remain under the legal definition of an established tree. So though we will, we may never see trees replacing trees. Uh, those Japanese maples and the, the, the sweet bays that you're proposing to replace the olive and the jacaranda. I, I have seen, you know, beautiful big trees being approved for removal by our city staff. And they come in and they let them plant in, you know, magnolias in, you know, large boxes and they don't get watered. I've got two down the street from me that they've been in for probably about a year now. They look worse now than the day they were planted and they will never become large majestic trees like the ones that were taken out. So unfortunately, I have very little confidence in our current tree removal process, uh, the permitting process. And, uh, again, that's over the counter and I don't have any control over that. But I do have control over whether or not I like the landscaping plan here that's proposed and whether I can approve it or not. And I, I'm just not comfortable with, um, so those are, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I imagine, uh, Camilia, if you could, uh, just confirm that we don't have, uh, Commissioner Kevin, Commissioner Jerry and Commissioner James here, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, so let me, uh, enter my thoughts on this. I concur and I don't want to repeat everything that was said by, uh, Commissioner Chang or, uh, Commissioner John, uh, or, uh, Brian and, uh, and Angela Tang, but I agree with them entirely and I agree with the decision of the DRC. I think it was, uh, a good decision and that this is way too massive. Uh, that this is more likely a scenario where you could have a single-story addition. Uh, but what has happened here is, uh, their placing, and I'm, I'm not adverse to the design in and of itself. It's, it's, as Commissioner John said, it's, it's on the wrong lot. You know, you could, you could take a, a, a design like that and place it on a much larger lot where there's, uh, a, a lot of, uh, a lot of areas for, uh, landscaping and, and doing other remediation, uh, that would lessen the privacy concerns. We don't have that here. This is a swing and a miss and I could not support, uh, ever approving this application. It is simply not consistent with the neighborhood. All right, do I have a vote or a, excuse me, do I have a, a, a motion at this point?
Yes, uh, Chairman Brody, uh, on that basis, I move to deny design review number DR twenty-one dash sixty-three.
Okay, do we have a second? Or actually what you're doing is, is affirming the denial of the DRC, correct? Or actually what you're doing is, is affirming the denial of the DRC, correct?
Um, I, I was under the impression that the, it was denied by the DRC and then now it is before us. Um, possibly on appeal, although I don't see that indicated on the staff report. The staff report recommends that um. The planning commission approved design review number DR twenty-one dash.
Very well, and, and you, you moved to deny, and do we have a second?
I, I just, I'm willing to second it, but I just want to make it. I want to make sure I'm understanding the wording correctly because my intent is to not allow the project to move ahead.
Correct, and, and that's why I questioned that. Uh, perhaps we could have Stephen. Uh, offer up his thoughts on this. My concept going into this was that we are. Looking at a denial by the DRC and we're to uh, affirm or overrule that denial. Uh, that's really what it comes down to in my mind. Do you have another thought on that, Stephen?
Well, Chair Brody, it is a.
Different plans than what DRC saw. This is a new before us, even though they. I, I mean, it's kind of weird. It's, the, these are new plans. DRC didn't see these plans.
And may I add, this is a de novo review.
That's what I thought.
Under the municipal code.
I got it.
So then, so then the motion was appropriate as made.
Correct.
Can I, can I just inquire, uh, whether the motion to deny is with prejudice or without prejudice? I think typ- typically, well, I'll leave it up to you.
Uh, the motion will be to deny without prejudice.
I will second that.
Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Chair Brody.
Agree with the denial.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
No.
An alternate Commissioner Chow?
Yes.
Okay, so that's four to one to deny.
Three to one.
I believe it's three to one.
Three to one, sorry.
Okay, let's move on.
And just, just to clarify too, for the uh, the parties that are involved, this will be brought back at the next. Planning commission meeting with, with a formal resolution. And with the adoption of the formal resolution, that would trigger the fifteen day appeal period.
That's correct. Okay, moving on, we have an adoption of uh, approval resolution number. Uh, PCR twenty-two dash zero eight for design review case number DR twenty-one dash seventy-eight. At nine seventy Sherwood Road. Uh, any comment on that or do we want to take that to a vote?
I was okay with them as I saw it, but.
Okay, so was I. Uh, let's take a, a vote on that.
Yeah, move to approve. I can't find the resolution number. Uh, to approve the resolution number PCR twenty-two dash oh eight.
I'll second that.
Okay, let's take a, a roll call on that.
Chair Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
An alternate Commissioner Chow?
Yes.
And then. Uh, approval of the minutes. Uh, at the irregular meeting of January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two, March. Twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, May twenty-fifth. Twenty-twenty-two and July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Any comments or motions on that?
I, I had a just quick question for clarification. I was not an alternate member uh, at some of those meetings, so am I. Uh, allowed to vote on these, uh, adopting these minutes?
Uh, Stephen, if you could speak to that, please.
And so typically, uh, we have. Members vote on the minutes if they were present at the meeting and I don't remember which meeting you first. Uh, joined the commission, but I believe the other three. Uh, commissioners that are present were at those other meetings. Maybe Camelia can confirm that for me.
Yes, that is true. Um, so if needed, um, we can have a, a three vote count.
I, you know, I don't believe there's any legal principle that would prevent you from voting if you went back and, and reviewed. The, the minutes. My concern here would be that you weren't even a member of the commission at the time of, of certain of those meetings. If you were. Absent, um, you could go back and review the, the, the recording and you could confirm that those are. Accurate minutes, but in this case, since you did not join the commission, I, I would recommend that you not vote. And we could do this, could break it into, into parts. Um, tho- those meetings that you were present at. Um, you could vote on those along with the other three commissioners and we could have a vote by the three commissioners for the other. Uh, remaining meetings. I'm sorry, again, Camelia, what was the first meeting at which Commissioner Chow was present?
I believe it was the May.
Yes, yes, May twenty-fifth was the first time uh, I had attended as an alternate, although I was not entitled to vote at that meeting.
Yeah, why don't we just break it apart that uh. Um, the Commissioner Chang will not be voting on January twenty-sixth, March twenty-third and April twenty-seventh. And then we'll have a second go around.
So he, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Commissioner Chow, you are not listed as present. For the May twenty-fifth. I believe your first meeting was actually June and for some reason we don't have the, the meeting minutes for June on here.
Oh, I see. That's a good point. Um.
So what, what, what you could do is a motion to approve the minutes for January twenty-sixth, March twenty-third, April twenty-seventh and May twenty-fifth and then have the three. Uh, other commissioners vote on that and then you could do a, a, a motion on July twenty-seventh. If, I believe Commissioner Chow is present for that and he could vote on that.
Okay, well, let's look at the, uh, let, uh, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Of January twenty-sixth, March twenty-third, April twenty-seventh and May twenty-fifth. Do we have that motion?
Don't move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's take a, a roll call on this.
Chair Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Okay, and then with regard to the uh, approval of the minutes of July twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two. Um, with regard to that, do we have a motion on that?
So.
Okay, question, second.
Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Chair Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
An alternate Commissioner Chow?
Yes.
Four oh.
Okay, moving on to item number four, community development director's report. Um, do we have such a report before us?
Thank you, Chair Brody. Um, I, I have a short report. Um, I have some exciting news. Uh, all committee and commission meetings will not be held in a hybrid mode, so. Uh, we will be able to attend in-person meetings or you can have the choice of also attending through Zoom as we have, so. I, I will be forwarding more information as staff is being trained. Uh, the meeting will take place at the bar room in the Crow uh, Public Library. So once again, you will have the option of either meeting in person or through Zoom. Uh, and again, I'll, I'll send more information as I have more details. Our first meeting will be, or the ability to meet in person will be September twenty-eighth. Uh, the first meeting where we're going to test this out will be September seventh for DRC. So I'll uh, I'll, I'll, I'll pass on the notes uh, once, once we go through that one. Um, uh, I will also be sending all committee and commission members the advisory body handbook again, just the. A reminder now that we have some new members of the rules of conduct and so forth. Um, also some exciting news, uh, the city finally hired the urban forester. Uh, the, she started on two weeks ago. So, you know, she's slowly transitioning. However, we are caught up with the tree. Uh, uh, applications, so she's not coming in. As uh, we found ourselves a few months ago with a backlog of tree applications. We've been pretty active and wanted to thank our consulting arborist, Peter Harnish, who has been assisting staff. With the uh, tree, the former tree. Uh, application backlog. A couple of uh, announcements in terms of recruitments. Uh, we are currently still recruiting for the senior planner. I believe there's two more weeks left on that recruitment. Uh, we currently closed the recruitment for uh, two permit texts. And uh, management analysts, uh, I'm going through the applications and believe me, there are plenty of them, so we're all. Hopefully they will have some good candidates to help out. Uh, and I saved the best news for last. Uh, you probably noticed two new faces. Uh, Eric G. and Savak Sosian. Uh, both of them are new assistant planners. They started a couple of weeks ago. And I mean, I, I've been really impressed with the hard work. That they have demonstrated these past few weeks. Just to give a couple of statistics. Um, we have reduced the plan check backlog by one-third. By just having them here and a, a real, I want to commend Camelia. For her hard work and effort on training them because they, I mean, she's just been spectacular. Not only being a, a, a one-person shop here, but with planning, but. She has really been uh, helpful and instrumental in uh, the training of Eric and Savag. Uh, Eric was a former intern for the city of Tustin and West Covina. I was really impressed that he was holding those two positions at the same time. Uh, Savag was a former intern at the city of San Fernando. He was highly recommended. And he's also a current grad student at uh, Cal Poly Pomona. Some say that's the fake Cal Poly. I don't know, you may have different minds, but. Uh, but we're, we're, we're happy that both of them are here ecstatic and they've just been great, phenomenal. Um, so again, our next meeting will be September twenty-eighth and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Asidro. Very, very positive. All right, um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Have we ever done that before?
Let's do it now, because we just broke up like, you know, it's like that movie Marty. What do you want to do? I don't know. What do you want to do? Let's have a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All right, we have a second.
I'll second that.
All right, we're gone.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, gentlemen.